They are experiences.
Yeah.
Was it?
This weekend.
Again, yes.
You're not.
I kind of just.
Would, yeah.
Is, um, we were talking about the events. They, yeah.
Okay.
If you want to do it, but if you want, yeah.
I can do that, too.
Yeah. Well, Seth, you want me to just run the, uh?
Please. Ball, Williams and Paul. This is Marshall's.
Oh.
Um.
It's a much better thing. That. Now, that's.
Or basically like.
It's all.
I'm taking this.
It is some sense.
And this, uh, I do use it. Okay. Yeah, I can probably do that. I simply see a. It.
I'd like to call to your honor the Wesley Town Council meeting for Monday, December first, two thousand and twenty five. All councils are here except Council Yellow was expected shortly. Town manager, town clerk, town sergeant, town solicitor are here. Um, first on the agenda is invocation with Council of Van Dober.
God Almighty, show us the next best step. When we don't know which way to turn, help us choose a path that leads nearer to you. The decisions we face feel overwhelming at times. In these moments of uncertainty, please guide our thoughts and actions. Illuminate our mind with your wisdom and clarity so we can see the path you have set before us. Help us to quiet our mind and listen. Give us the discernment to recognize your guidance and the courage to follow it, even when it seems difficult or unclear. Let your light shine brightly on our path, guiding us through the fog of doubt and fear. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. Blue to the flag.
I believe. Five. United States. How awful. Under. The principle of believing does it so long.
Uh, next we have recognition of awards and memorials. And first we have congratulations to Coach Vodka. Sixty years of volunteering for Wesley Pee Wee Football. Said fifty, but we gave you full credit on the, uh. Counselor La Picha.
The Wesley Town Council extends his congratulations to Joe Vodka in recognition of his retirement from the Wesley Pee Wee Football Organization after sixty years of dedication and contributions to the program. Coach Vodka has been a major part of the organization throughout the six decades, serving as president and coach, dedicating his time, love and passion for the game of football to mentor generations of young players, teaching them discipline, teamwork and respect for others. He has made an impactful difference on many of his players and in two thousand and twenty was a recipient of the youth coach of distinction award for Rhode Island. An award given to a coach, the love of the game of football and who is dedicated to the betterment of the game and the development of its young athletes. The town council expresses its sincerest appreciation to said Joe Vodka for his many years of commitment to the sport of football and to the young players in the community. Who will be reminded of the strength, leadership and love of the program through the naming of the fieldhouse and Old Hopkinton Road as the Joe Vodka Fieldhouse. And further extends its best wishes for good luck, good health and happiness in his retirement sound are signed by all counselors. And at this time, I'd like to invite, uh, Mr. Josh Arnold, the chair of the rec board to come up and accept his congratulations on Mr. Vodka's behalf. And if he has anything to add, then he can do that.
Joe, the rec board and rec department would also like to say thank you for your years of service. Uh, what you've done for this community is second to none. Um, I wish more people would see what you're doing and join up and volunteer their time and, uh, it's greatly appreciated. Thank you. We, we gave you this, uh, little plaque to recognize you.
Joe, come on up, sir. Mr. Vodka.
I hate to take.
Where? Do you ever want to do it, Mr. Vodka? I don't know. I didn't see. I didn't see over there.
Uh, Mr. Town Manager. First, the council members. I want to thank you for acknowledging me. With my sixty years of dedication to Wesley Pee Wee Football. I've left it with other people in good hands and they promised me that program will never die out and they will keep it going. I didn't know what I was gonna do. Sixty years is a long time, but I loved every bit of it. I love to work with the kids. A lot of the kids need help and we do that also. It's not just football. Uh, I didn't, so again, I didn't know what I was into until about four years ago. Our boy, age eight years old came up to me and said, you coached Joe Vodka. I said, yeah, I am. He says, you coached my grandfather. And I said, it's time to go. Thank you very much.
That's, that's just great. What you've done for Wesley is, is unbelievable and unmatchable. My, both sons went through the program that you, you taught and they taught them so much character and they love the game and the respect for you, coaches, uh, is unquestioned. You did a great job. Thank you for everything. How, and the, uh, the next, the next, um, presentation, I'm sorry, recognition is congratulations to Wesley High School Girls Volleyball Team. R I League Division Two. Uh, champions in Council Van Dover, would you please read, uh? A recommendation, uh, citation.
It's my honor. Um, so the town of Westerly Council and all extend cred- congratulations to the Westerly High School Girls Volleyball Team. Namely Captain Lila Off, Abigail Champlin, Sevea Crawford, Captain Abigail Emery, Emerson Federico, Annabelle Fowler, Gemma Fasaro, Ella Keegan, Allison Miranda. Assistant Coach Megan Lacy. I missed the line, forgive me, there's so many names here, I apologize. Madison O'Neil, Jenna Parker, Ella Reyes, Lila Wyckall, Head Coach Laurel Off, Assistant Coach Megan Lacy and Assistant Coach Rana Hamlin. On winning the two thousand and twenty five Rhode Island Interscholastic League Division Two Championship on November eighth, two thousand and twenty five, at the Murray Center on the campus of Rhode Island College. Top seed Westerly went to twenty one and oh overall in season matches and defeated number two seed Barrington in five sets to win the Division Two Volleyball Championship. The town council commends the Westerly High School Girls Volleyball Team on its achievement and expresses admiration and pride for these young women who brought honor and recognition to their league, their families and to the town of Westerly. I would also like to just mention that Coach Laurel Off was being selected as one of the two thousand and twenty five high girls, high school regional, region coaches of the year by the American Volleyball Coaches Association. So congratulations, Coach. In recognition. In recognition whereof, we have hereby set our hands and cause the seal of the town of Westerly to be here and to affix this first day of December, sound by, signed by all town counselors. Congratulations, ladies, you should be proud.
Sergeant, you did a great job. Thank you. Like. Right. All right, Bill. Thank you. Well, job well done.
Well, thanks for making us proud. That's, that's a great achievement. Next, we have presentations. Uh, first, we have the W B L Q radio station, new ownership introduction. Uh, Mr. Rick Schmidt. Please come forward.
I'm here.
Yes.
How's everybody doing tonight? I'd like to thank everybody for inviting me here to town council and, uh, town supervisor. This may be the first time in front of you, but I got to introduce Santa Claus the other night. I love this town. It, it, this is definitely a very cool place. You're very lucky to live here. I want to get here as soon as possible. Now to the station. A lot of you do listen to the station. You can tell I didn't blow the station up. It is exactly what we had. You have all the local content in the morning. Everybody's invited to come in and talk. Everybody, I like to hear everybody's voice in there. I like to hear the old voices, new voices. And I would like to also, we had a lot of sports stuff here a second ago. It's a little late in the season. Next year, I would like to reintroduce sports to the station. We, you know, you have your local, uh, football and other, you know, teams, things that we could put on there. And it's like one of those things I'd like to, you know, uh, bring forward. There was a chain here a second ago. Um, the, the station itself, we have a lot of work to go do mechanically here. Uh, as you know, we got to rebuild everything down by the river there with the tower side is. We started looking into different things. We have an engineer who, who's looking, is waiting for us to get other information. I have three different, uh, versions of ideas at this moment, and I'm just trying to decide on which one. Obviously, we timed out for the season because we're going into the winter, so there's no need to focus on that right now. There were other more pressing things I had to, uh, go take care of. Uh, I also have another idea to help, uh, improve maybe the FM signal here in, in town. Um, that's inkling stage, but I've come up with some good information that, uh, you know, we can get a little further out in the community, you know, instead of just like, just down here closer to downtown. The studio itself, I, I, I love the way the studio is set up. It, it, there's, there's so many parts of this that were ready together before I got here. And I'd like to thank Tom for keeping everything going after Chris had passed away. Uh, it's, uh, you know, it's, uh, it's big shoes to fill and you can't fill shoes. You, you do your own thing and that's what I'm doing. And I'm, I'm meeting with people like, uh, this afternoon, Lisa Kinnick, you know, with the chamber. You know, I'm trying to meet all types of people here to try to get, uh, you know, the ball going in many, many directions here. And I met some of you at the station or around town or and so forth. It's, it's been very good so far. I'm, I'm, like I said, I'm, I'm, I'm very comfortable being here and speaking to you. Uh, that's pretty much where we're going right now. Status quo. And I'm sure everybody's going to be very happy with the direction we're going to continue to go and grow. Okay?
Thank you. Thank you so much for that overview and for coming into town and, and, uh, keeping up W B L Q afloat and continuing what, uh, the community radio is all about, um, for Wesley. The local programming really can't be duplicated.
Uh, this is local, local, local. I love this stuff. I love it. You have no idea. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night, Doc. I have, uh, one of the events where he came, he came to visit today. I got a group you ready.
Thank you. Moving on to, uh, the next presentation of the Wesley two hundred and fiftieth commission for the semi quint- quintessential event. I can't say, I can't speak. Quintcentennial. Quintcentennial, thank you. Uh, first, I'd like to introduce, uh, Tom Castle liaison, uh, Council Nemaier for an introduction.
Sure, I'll just introduce, uh, this commission really quickly. Um, the Wesley Semi Quincentennial Commission is, uh, was put together because we're coming up on the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary of America's independence in two thousand and twenty six. For a quarter of a millennium, the American experiment has been going strong and we are so grateful and so proud as a town to have been part of it for all two hundred and fifty of those years. Um, in order to express that gratitude and that pride, we put together this commission to assemble a series of celebrations, uh, to show just how grateful we are. Uh, and now they're going to show us what they put together. They've been working very diligently on this and I think what they have put together is really going to impress everyone. Uh, Caswell and, uh, John, uh, on your lead.
Great. Well, thank you all, counselors, for having us here. Um, we were put together a few months ago to come up with some ideas for a way to celebrate the two hundred and fiftieth birthday of America. Um, and we are here to present them to you and get your feedback. Um, I do want to introduce the committee. Uh, Jean Garnier is here and the rest of the committee, most of the rest of the committee is behind me. Vice Chair Bob Madison, um, our secretary Zach Garceau, Mark Barado, he's not here tonight. Uh, Seth Logan is behind us and, uh, James Wolfe, who's not officially on the committee, but he is, uh, going to be in charge of a portion of it that has to do with the time capsule and Madeline Wedvik. And so they're all here and each one will say a little something about their specialty area tonight. So we do have a PowerPoint for you that John is, uh, bringing up. So we're the, uh, we're going to go over the commission's mission. Um, uh, our partner organizations, our calendar of events. Uh, the budget. And, uh, we'll have time for some questions and answers and hopefully we'll get this done very quickly. So, uh, the first is the commission's mission.
So this was directed to us by you. This is right from the ordinance. Um, we've been directed by the town council to insist, uh, through assist in ensuring of, uh, observance of the semi quintcentennial. Takes a lot of practice.
Yes.
Of the American Revolution. And, uh, so, um, that's, that's our mission.
All right. So first is the logo that we want to get everywhere around our town. Uh, we had several choices and we honed in on this one. America two fifty Westerly. Um, each town is coming up with their, most towns are coming up with their own spin on the two hundred and fiftieth. But, you know, we would like to see this on banners, on signs, on events, on posters, um, on social media. But this would be our brand and our logo for the coming year.
Um, just a little note, the Westerly script portion is been taken from a town record. Um, it was, uh, the clerk from seventeen seventy six who wrote Westerly and script and been cut out and is included in the, uh, in the, uh, logo.
It's nice, very nice.
Should I ask a quick question, too? Did Seth Logan design the logo? He did. I saw his handiwork there, very, very nice logo, very.
All right. So we have a bunch of partner organizations, um, the library, Babcock Smith House, the Historical Society, the public schools, uh, obviously working with the town clerk, the United Theater, the chorus of Westerly, uh, Wesley Chalk and Talk Veterans Board, the Columbus State Parade Committee, Granite Theater, Westerly Armory, three, two, one media, Gray Cell Brewery, we'll add W B L Q to that, uh, in light of just seeing the new owner of W B L Q. There he is. So the next thing we want to do is, is come up with some of the events. So, you know, coming up with sort of one big event on the Fourth of July, I mean, we could have done that, but we wanted to spread this out over the course of the year and have things that are educational, have things that appeal to people that are interested in learning about the revolution, have things that are interesting to students, have some big events that everybody in town would want to go to just because it's a celebration. So kind of, you know, a whole mix of events that would go on throughout the year. So we'll start talking about those events. All right. So the first person I want to bring up, and this is a really cool idea, is to have a time capsule that we bury, uh, right in front of the town hall with permission, um, on the actual Fourth of July in the morning before everyone goes off and does picnics and fireworks and things like that. So, uh, James Wolfe, I'd like to have him come up and, uh, if you remember the, um, the great work that he did at the cemetery, uh. That's where a lot of you met him and, uh, he came to our committee and said he is, he would like to do a time capsule. So I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. President, Madam Vice President, distinguished members of the town council. My name is James Wolfe. I'm a citizen of Westerly, proud military veteran, former intelligence analyst and a member of the Sons of the American Revolution. As part of the celebration of the America's two fif- two hundred and fiftieth anniversary, the town of Westerly invites all residents to take part in a truly historic project, the Westerly Time Capsule. The time capsule will be buried on July fourth, two thousand and twenty six and opened on July fourth, twenty one, twenty six, one hundred years later. This is not just any Fourth of July. This moment marks a milestone for our country and our community, offering us the opportunity to contribute something meaningful that will last a full century and beyond. This is not just any time capsule. This time capsule will include the participation of everyone in Westerly, all twenty three thousand, three hundred and fifty nine of us, from the youngest to the oldest. Every person in our town has a story to tell. Each participant is encouraged to write a personal letter describing who they are, what life is like in Westerly today and their hopes for the future. Their letters should include photos of themselves, their family, their homes, their pets, their grand, their parents, their grandparents, their great grandparents, their children, their grandchildren, their great grandchildren. Tell who their friends are and where they work and most importantly, about their lives here in Westerly. No other town in America is creating a one hundred year time capsule tied directly to the nation's two hundred and fiftieth anniversary in this way. Westerly is stepping forward as a national leader, honoring our shared past and inspiring the future. What we are building together is truly a story for the ages, one that future generations will look back on with, with wonder, gratitude and tremendous pride. This time capsule will serve as a gift to those who come after us, capturing the stories, voices and experiences of today's Westerly residents. These submissions will create a living portrait of our town as it stands in two thousand and twenty six, a true reflection of Westerly that we know and love. Over the next two hundred and fifteen days until July fourth, two thousand and twenty six, the plan is to promote this project with every school, every church, veterans group, police and fire departments, every civic organization and businesses throughout Westerly. The proposed location for bearing the time capsule will be in the heart of Westerly, a prominent and highly visible area and will be marked with a commemorative plaque made from Westerly granite. That honors the project and explains its significance to both our history and our future. We invite everyone, residents, families, schools, civic groups and businesses to be a part of this extraordinary project. Together, we can ensure that the voices of today's Westerly will echo one hundred years from now. The Westerly Time Capsule is more than a container of memories. It is a bridge between generations, a celebration of community spirit and a promise to the future. No other town in America is doing anything like this. Your story deserves to be remembered. Together, we will make history and create a true story for the ages. Ladies and gentlemen, this is the Westerly way. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to put your iPhone in it too as a remembrance, Chris.
My iPhone? My iPhone? My flip phone?
Yeah. Oh, you're still having, no, can't do that. And that, just going back, that would be what would be out front. So one of the things we're asking permission for is can we bury this in front of the town hall? And put that plaque over. That way, everybody walking by on the sidewalk for the next 100 years will see it, and hopefully whoever the town manager is 100 years from now will say, geez, we should dig that up. All right, next slide there. It would be Sean.
And shape these in.
Well, I was just saying this solicitor's been here a long time. You never know. All right. The, another idea we had is for a revolutionary ball to be held at the Westerly Armory. And Mark was going to be here to speak about that, but we'll have Zach speak about it instead.
All right. Thank you. So as Caswell mentioned, one of the other ideas that we have is a revolutionary ball. We're actually still workshopping the name a bit because it might actually be more of a, we're envisioning more as a look through history, I guess, over time. So starting with the revolutionary era. And we're hoping to hold this at the Armory, and they're actually going to be celebrating their 125th anniversary next year. So I think it's a great opportunity for us to work together on that. And one of the most important things about this event too is that all the other events that we're going to be talking about today are going to be free and open to the public. However, this event is going to be a ticketed event. So it is actually, we're hoping it will generate much of the money that would be spent on it, would be coming back through ticket sales. And we're really looking forward to this event, and and I think that was.
Yeah, I think, just to expand upon it a little bit more, we haven't quite got the theme yet, but of all the events, and you'll see the whole list of events throughout the year, this would be the only one that people would buy tickets for. But as was just explained, the money from this can go to help offset that event itself as well as maybe some of the other events or a piece of the other events. I mean, obviously, if we're having like a catered dinner, you've got to have an entry fee for that. But that would be the only one that would have that, that fee. All right. The next thing is something even more fun. We looked into fireworks. We looked into Fourth of July fireworks. But if you wanted us to come here tonight and tell you what it would cost to have fireworks on July 4th on the 250th anniversary of America, Dylan would laugh us out of the room. So we decided to come up with something a little bit different, drones, number one, easier to set up, number two, not on the Fourth of July, but on May 4th, which you may or may not know is Rhode Island's Independence Day. We were the first state to declare independence, and it was on May 4th. So we would, we would do it that day. And so to talk a little about the drones, and he went through all the numbers and got various quotes, and, and what it would look like, I give you Seth.
Seth Logan, Wesley 250 Commission. I was tasked to put together, I guess, what you would call the main event, which will actually be held on May 2nd, it's a Saturday, which obviously will be a drone show, hopefully. 270 drones total. 68 of those will be pyrotechnic enabled. So we'll actually be able to launch fireworks off of the drones. I think this is slightly better situation for today. A lot of people not too into fireworks anymore, the dogs and a lot of autistic children and whatnot. I think this will be a little bit more low key. Our proposed location is the Wesley High School turf field. So it'll help us cut down on some costs. We have audio there and whatnot that we don't have to, to rent out and whatnot. So the event would include music, entertainment, hopefully food trucks, local vendors. The show would be 15 minutes long, fully customizable to our liking and our visuals, whatever we want to do. Also includes a custom soundtrack. We would need access to the venue six hours prior for setup, which would be roughly 2 o'clock in the afternoon. We'd need 90 minutes thereafter for breakdown, to clean everything up, get the drones out of there. The drones would be launching from the field adjacent to the quad. The, the main show would actually be over the quad. So people, if we're located on the turf field, be able to get the right viewing angle. The rain date would be May 3rd, I believe, tentatively. We're unable to execute on either date. We would have the option to reschedule or receive a refund minus travel expenses, and the permitting as well is also included in that price. So, thank you.
And here you go to see what it would look like.
Except it wouldn't say Pinehurst.
Or John Deere.
One of the things that was done a few years ago, when South County Tourism Council did the Sandcastle event down at the beach, was the first time we had a real drone show in Westerly, and it was huge, and so many people came out and looked for it. And you can customize it, and it's just really cool to see a drone show up there.
This is for a golf course.
Right. That's just for a golf course. So obviously, our thing would have like, you know, American flags and whatever we, whatever the town comes up with as far as like a theme, obviously patriotic, things like that. But it wouldn't just be like a quick 20-minute display. We would have events leading up to it. So people would come in at like 6 o'clock, and they would have food trucks, and they can sit in the bleachers, and we would have some, we could get some local bands to perform and, and sort of, you know, make it a whole night of fun, and then cap the night with the drones. All right. Who's next? Madeline?
Hi, Madeline Wedvik. For the event we're proposing for April, this is aimed including all the kids of Westerly, K through 12. We'll be partnering with the park along with Westerly Public Schools to get all of the kids there for a field day. We will have different reenactors throughout the park that the kids will travel with, learn, talk to. We'll have trivia in there as well. And at the end, they will decide if they want to enlist as either a soldier or a pirate. This is really just aimed at making them excited, them involved, and hopefully for the 300th commission, they'll be remembering this fondly. Thank you.
Ah, and now the calendar of events. So these are all the events that we came up with for the entire year that will take us from January all through to November. Some of them, you'll notice, are piggybacking on existing events. For instance, Summer Pops, I've talked to Andrew Howell, and they've agreed that they'll do something that will honor the 250th, whether it's a patriotic medley or something along like that. And you can see whether, you know, we'll have our own division in the Columbus Day Parade, things like that. But I'll leave it to John to go through some of, some of those.
So the goal, the goal here is, you know, we looked at Rhode Island 250, and they had kind of guidebook for, for communities. And as a group, we felt it was very important that we have, one, this high level of public awareness. So there's numerous events. So there will be things happening routinely, and you may even see partner organizations adding other things, like Wesley Historical Society will be adding additional things. An educational component, a number of these things, whether it's Hotlins, Babcock Smith, Wesley Library, the Wesley Historical Society, they're all concerned with education, you know, basic education. There is one thing I want to call out to you, and we haven't said the date for it, but it is the planting of a liberty tree in the park. And the other thing is town hall documents. So as Mary will tell you, I often, you'll often see my car here, and I'm not here to see anybody else but Mary and go into the, and pull up the old town records. So we literally have town records back to 1669. We have records that you can read, and I have, and transcribed from 1776, very easy. So we would like to have an event where we, somewhere here in the town hall, with security, meaning volunteers that are overseeing it, opportunities for student groups and for the public to come in and view and see some of these things. Because we think it's an important part of who we are. I mean, very few towns can go back and say, we can give you records from the very beginning. Westerly proud to say can, and thanks to Mary and her staff. So the other thing is it's fun events for the kids and honoring the past. So what you're seeing is a full menu. So if you sat down and just thought you were going to get a couple of eggs and a side of home fries, you're wrong. There's a full feast here. Now the budget. Sorry.
Yeah, the money, what we think it will cost to have a year of celebration. Quite a few of these events are not going to cost anything, but they're not necessarily the ones that are going to have the pizzazz. So what we're looking for is bottom line, $75,000 is what we think would fund all of these events throughout the entire year. Some of these will generate money, as I said, the Westerly Armory Independence Ball, but the, the Drone Independence Day, that whole day, that's the big nut, that's $60,000. Because those, if you go price those drones and all the things that go along with it, that's your biggest expense. The time capsule, we put down $4,000 for that. We may even be able to have some people cover some of that cost. But to be safe, we, and we were up to, and we have a contingency fund of 3,600. Our subtotal, as you see, was 90,000, but minus the revenue from the ball tickets, it brought us down to 75,000. I know you're also eligible for some grant money. We are not saying, give us $75,000, and if you get the $25,000 grant, give us that too. No, we're saying if you get the $25,000 grant, apply it to that. If you get the $5,000 grant, apply it to that. But that's, that's pretty much what it'll cost. And obviously, you know, the, the big thing is, is, is our big day of celebration, the Rhode Island Independence Day. So that's obviously what we're looking at. We're, we're not obviously able to proceed unless, number one, you guys discuss this, you agree upon it. I'm not going to tell you time is of the essence, but time is kind of of the essence.
January 1st coming quickly.
Well, yeah. And also, you know, having to put down deposits on the, obviously, the big thing is the drone, the drone event, you'll have to put down probably a 50% deposit on something like that. Getting the permissions, then we'll obviously have to take this probably through licensing board and things like that. We have to get a little more in-depth with the schools about what's required for that day when it comes to the time capsule, things like that. There's other things that'll be done. I mean, Ken Burton's going to put the flags all over town. We're going to, John came up with the original flag, Rhode Island flag for, who is this now?
This is for the first, the first Rhode Island regiment, which served, Rhode Island had troops involved from Siege of Washington in April, shortly after April of 1775, after Lexington conquered all the way. And the first Rhode Island was one of the groups at Yorktown that helped storm the Redons and ultimately forced Cornwallis to surrender. This is a historic flag. It was one of the first regiments to be fully integrated. It had, it had white people in it, you know, colonists. It had African Americans, both free and slaves, who later earned their freedom, and Native Americans, Nogansits and Niantics and that, who joined in and fought for freedom. So a couple of things, Ken has advised this, certain flags. You also have the Betsy Ross flag. You know that one, the circle 15 stars. So the thing is, this flag is a historic flag in Rhode Island. But we can only fly on town property official flags. Good news is you have the power to make this an official flag, the 250, along with the Betsy Ross flag, and that we could have some of these flying in town.
Lot of asks tonight.
Well, you know, there's a lot of things that we can do next year, and one of the other things is, you know, having banners and things, all that's figured in the budget, the extra flags, the banners that would be up, you know, around town. Obviously, if we're marching in all the praise, we need to have banners to, to hold like they do in front of the regiments. But all that is figured into that budget, figured into that ask. So, you know, you guys discuss it, put it on your agenda, however, whatever your process is, wherever the town manager could tell you that you could get that money, because obviously, we can't wait until July 1st of next year, because it'll be too late. But there's always contingency funds and things like that. So, you know, obviously, let us know, we, we brought this to you. This is not money that is for us. This money is not for the committee. This committee is a group of volunteers that are giving you ideas for your and our town. So if you like them, we would love to implement them. If it's too much, or you don't want to do that, then just let us know, and either way.
Yeah, I'll just start by saying what an impressive job that the committee has done with all these great events. I can't think of anything more that could fit in that, and I really appreciate what you both, what you all have done. And as far as the money, I know the town council liaison has some ideas on that. Do you want to start, Mike?
Sure. So I do have some notions on how we could get to 75K. There is the contingency fund. That is generally where we would draw some of these from. There's also our grant matching fund, some of which are grants that we have not won. And now that money is just sort of there. We don't want to dip into that too thoroughly, but it is a $500,000 fund that we set aside last year. And if we were to take, I'd think about 19K from it. That in addition to the 7,000 in grants that you've already won, I'm not sure if you're aware of that.
We are not.
Fantastic. You have, in addition to that, we would need to take probably about 37.5 out of the contingency fund, and I think that gets us there. That's basically it. I think, I think it's a pretty good formula for getting us to exactly where you want to be. In addition to that, there is the new, the National Endowment for the Humanities Rediscovering Our Revolutionary Tradition grant for 25K. I would like us to apply for that. It is, I'll walk you through it a little bit. I think I sent Seth to your last meeting with some information on it. But if we were to apply for that, it would have to, you know, sort of cover some of the stuff that's there, and also maybe some other additional items, just because there are rules about supplanting federal funds that we might have to, you know, dance around if we try to allocate all 75K upfront. Alternatively, we could do it in a phased manner where we get you the deposit early on, apply for the grant, see if we get the grant. If we don't get the grant, then we allocate the rest. That's a little riskier, but that's another way we could do it. I think there are ways to get to where you have described, and I want us to get there because I think what you have put together is a fantastic way to bring the town together and to celebrate 250 years of our revolutionary tradition.
So Councilor Niemeyer, you, you haven't worked it out with the manager. Let's, let's.
I've, I've had some discussions with him.
Okay. If you're on board, then we're on board.
I think with the, and again, we can do, the, the committee is looking for it to commit up to the 75. We work it out how we come up with it. I mean, we'll apply because they have to, obviously, you need to schedule this stuff, correct? That's, that's what they're looking for, really. So how will we work it out with the funding? We work it out. If you get the grant, you get the grant. We know we already got seven. There's another 25 that they're applying?
Yeah.
Which would bring you to 32. So I think you just, we have to make a commitment as a town if we're going to go that direction for up to 75, which means whatever we can't get through funding and grant applications and so forth, because suppose there's some other money coming from the state. They haven't come up with the amount. How it's getting divided between the communities yet. So that would offset this. Because I think you're looking for 75 total, right? You're not looking, if we get extra money, you have another party. So.
Not unless you want ponies.
I think it's.
You want ponies in class.
Right. Just commit to the 75, and then we'll figure out how it was going.
Anybody want to?
I got a question of the town manager. Just could you refresh my memory? How much money is in the, your contingency fund?
I'm not sure, probably zero, but.
What do we usually, what do we usually put in it?
I think we put in 150 or 175 last year, but some of it was for the contracts. It was contracts that weren't signed.
There was raises as well, wasn't there?
And we.
That was for, for.
808.
808 raises.
And that's down. You, you whittle that down to almost nothing?
I don't know the balance. It was planned, it was scheduled, the funding in it to just about that. But again, we, there's ways we can come up with the money. I mean, there's areas we haven't spent in yet anyway, so.
Any other comments on the program or? Yes, Councilman Dover?
Thank you guys for all your hard work. I, I think it's exciting, you know. You know, Seth, great job on the logo, and also the coming up with the drones idea. That's pretty neat. I would like to see that. That's definitely going to be a, 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 something to behold. Mr. Wolfe, I just want to say thank you for your service. I did see your granite stone over at the cemetery. Was there for that dedication. Very well done, very well done. Affect a lot of people's lives, and I'm sure that they appreciate it just as much as, as I did. So, and the kids' militia. So, and the kids militia thing, can, can I, can I, can I be involved in that? I would love to do that. That sounds like that would be a lot of fun. As far as the grants go, I hope we can get as much out of that as possible. And I know you asked about the flags. I guess that'll be a discussion we'll have to have probably a little later down the road, but really, really well done, well thought out. Thank you so much.
Council Healy?
Thank you, guys. You took everything that I thought in my head and put it on paper really well. And I love the little details, the, the signature from the clerks' records. I'm really excited that WBLQ, we could start getting that going again. I also really liked hearing the phrase "the Westerly Way" be used in a positive manner. I appreciate that. My only question is about the drone show. So it's fully customizable. How or will, okay, I'll just ask for myself, am I able to see it before it happens? Like, are we able to know what's gonna be in it, being that it's so customizable? Where does that flexibility go?
Yeah, I mean, and Seth, if you want to answer, but I'm sure the, I know the answer is that we, we tell them what we want, and then we get to see it on a screen before it's, you know, organized. So we could, you know, the sooner we commit to them, then the sooner we get it to you. And you, if you have an idea, say, oh, you missed this, you missed that, or whatever, you know, as far as images. But yeah, it, nothing will be, there won't be any surprises that night. It's not up to them, it's up to us.
Sounds good. And I also, I'm glad that the Liberty Tree made it in there. I know we had shared some emails before the committee was even formed. And I think, you know, when all three, when Rose, my, Mike and myself all sat down with everybody that we interviewed, every single thing that you guys mentioned that you wanted to do, you did it. So I'm, I'm just, I'm really impressed, though. Thank you so much for everything.
Thank you. Councilor Ayala?
Thank you. Thanks for the pre-intention, and I'm glad to see several people here talking and explaining things. That's very helpful. And when I first heard the price tag, it's a holy miracle, and then hearing it, you know, the more it's, it's easier for me, and especially hearing that there's a potential for several more grants. And I guess we haven't heard how much the state is gonna kick in either. Couple of questions. For the pyrotechnics that you're saying for the drone show, what kind of noise level are we talking?
As far as I understand, they're not typical fireworks, so you're not gonna get big, big explosions.
Is it mostly light?
Yeah, it's like what they, it's like fountains. It's like what they use like in rock shows or whatnot.
All right, so no, no chest pounders and.
You're gonna have more noise from, like, the music beforehand than you would from the.
All right, all right. So that kind of eliminates my next question. I was gonna say, well, what would be the cost difference between having pyrotechnics and not having them? Using the drones. I've seen a lot of drones and other, you know, similar things to drones doing light shows, and they're beautiful.
The problem with fireworks is you're so limited in Westerly as to where you can set them up. I don't know if you guys know, but we haven't done them in Missauhama yet in years, because the fires, you have no place you can do them. And summer pops has to do those close proximity ones, because Wesley Education Center is built on the site that we use to send them off. So we couldn't do it at Westerly High School if it was actual fireworks. It would have to be probably only Similory Fields, like the only place, you know, or the Bradford Field. But so as far as the drones, it's just like the setup and the security around, everything's much easier.
Okay, all right.
Plus, it's cooler, because everybody does fireworks and not as many people do drones. So I don't know, might just, I think we think it would attract people.
A lot of, yeah, even a lot of the national things that use more the drones too, so, no, that's, that's good, that's smart.
We can get it to say ILO twenty six.
I don't need my name. I mean, what is it? DJ, what is it?
Yeah, DJ Castle, sure, yeah.
Author, what? Yeah, no, I heard the questions were already answered, so thank you.
Very good. Councilor Shalaba?
Thank you for coming. Appreciate everything. Regarding the drone show, where are you looking to have it?
At the high school. So at the field, at the football field. So people would go and sit in the bleachers and the, and the drones would come up, and so anyone in that area of town. We were trying to think of like where you could do it, where the most people could see it. You know, and originally it was like, well, let's do it downtown, and then we're thinking, well, you're gonna be standing on High Street, like trying to look between the buildings. So if people want to see it, they can sit in stands, probably on the field, if that's allowed, I don't know. But figure out that that's, that's like a central location in town that has some infrastructure, you know, bathrooms, sound system, things like that.
If you think about it with the streets in the area, there at the top of the hill, it wouldn't just necessarily be limited just to the, the football field, because the drone's gonna be up in the air, though. It's not like you're watching a game. You could get more, more folks all along, picture all on the high school, along the lawn in the high school, in the parking lots and everything. You'd probably have a pretty large viewing area in a capacity. And this is an area of town that, when we have the pops every year, thousands of people find someplace to park.
And because of this year, where it was really not normal, where we've had two parades canceled due to weather, and we even had the rain date canceled, do we have a, another backup with weather, with the drones? Whether it's, you know, really bad wind or, or something like that.
The next, the next day.
No, I know, but, you know, like, if the next day also doesn't work, is there, is there another? Because we had that problem this year, and it was the first time they had that with the Columbus State Parade, and, you know, all the work that everybody put into it.
They would actually give us a, a rain date, which would be the following day. And if we're unable to execute on either of those dates, we would have the option to reschedule completely later on, or they would give us a refund minus their travel expenses. So I believe they're coming out of Texas, so.
And, and Seth, is the sixty thousand, was that like the best price of what you were finding?
And actually, the, the show, if we, when we first got the committee together, we, we had initially wanted to kind of do it on the fourth. The show is actually double if we do it on the fourth. So, and then just, just looking at fireworks, like we talked about fireworks, and the pops have kind of, everyone's kind of seems disappointed with the pops as of late. And from my understanding, the, it's like a thirty to forty thousand dollar fireworks show for the pops. So I think we're gonna achieve a lot more.
And how many hours or, you know, time is this show going to last?
Just the drone itself, the drone show, they're up for fifteen minutes.
Oh, okay.
So.
Okay.
Which is why it's the culmination of an evening of events.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
And the significance of the day is, I can't, it's, it's actually, we say Rhode Island Independence Day is what's been called it. It's Renunciation Day. So we renounce our loyalty to the King, and then immediately send communication to the Continental Congress and say, declare independence. And really thoroughly encourage the other colonies to join. Rhode Island was out there by itself at that point. So in history, it's really, it's an forgotten event, but it is significant.
And are you guys concerned at all with the Armory's one hundred and twenty fifth birthday, that they may not want to do a ball there?
No, they, Mark is already, one of our committee members has already talked to them, so.
Okay, good, good. No, I just wanted, I wanted to ask, because, you know, they've got a lot of things.
Things too, yeah.
Yeah.
But I think this, this can work together, one hundred and fifty, one hundred and twenty five for them, two fifty for America. Sure, we can figure out a way to stop the difference.
Yeah. Well, thank you for all the work that you've done. Thank you very much.
Well, all, all the partner organizations, let me just say, we reached out to all the partner organizations. We had, we had their permission before putting them up there and, and, and sharing. They are very much excited about being included as part of the town events, being us assisting in advertising them, advertising our events. So it's really a community-wide effort. Also, Three Two One Media, you saw it there, Three Two One Media for some of our talks and things, will end up recording and broadcasting on the internet, and then have those available for posterity. We'll give them to the clerk, because we know the clerk's office knows how to hold on to records.
So this is a great idea. Thank you for pulling this together in short order. And the, the challenge is with us now, December seventeenth, we'll have to have a meeting with the manager's guidance and get, get you guys off the ground.
I also wanted to mention one last thing. Gray Sale Beer is gonna do a special beer with the two fifty Western.
Oh, I love that.
With the logo.
Definitely. Little both.
You'll be invited.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So next, next on the agenda is citizens' comments, and I, I just want to offer, if the planning board or a school committee want to participate in in item eight E, the school bus garage, you can wait to speak, or you can speak now, whatever you choose. Is there any on the sign up? Nobody on the sign up? So no, no one has signed up, but if anyone in the audience wishes to speak, you, you could come forward. Please state your name and address, and it has to be with regards to the agenda items at this, this level.
Ben Weber, Three Blossom Court. Chair of the Harbor Management Commission, here on my own accord tonight. Happy belated Thanksgiving. I hope everybody had a nice holiday. I really don't have much to say, but, um, Noise Neck Road. It seems very well done. It's one statement. Send it. But I'll use my minute to give you a little background on stuff maybe you don't know. Nineteen oh six, if you look at pictures, they used to go down that right away with horses and get seaweed in the cove. There's a lot of history in that area. Spring Avenue was used too. It was the only open spa on the other side. Seaweed used to get caught in the rocks. So the farmers went down there a lot to get their seaweed to fertilize and grow food for people. So anyway, it's very important. Noise Neck Road was highway. It was always listed as highway. Went straight down to the water. So, good job. Keep it up. Have a good night.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience that would like to speak? Please come forward.
Joy Cordio, Westerly. I will comment on Noise Neck Road and thank Counselor Van Dover for pushing all the rightsway stuff through and acknowledge Anthony Palazolo, who provided all the documentation to prove enough to the solicitor, to solicitor to refer this. But I'm actually here to speak about, I think it's eight E, the zoning table. And again, I will give a nod to Counselor Van Dover. She has every right to be concerned about our water supply and our water source and contamination. And that's the issue at hand. It's contamination, and it has been for forty years. This has been forty years, and it's a good, it's a good time to address this. There's a couple of things, it, it's unclear what your discussion is gonna be about, based on your document being just a zoning table. Obviously, the transportation garage had been grandfathered, not allowed to be there, but it was there when the zoning changed, which is why it's there. But I just want to talk a minute about the contamination. I hate to see you rush into anything, although I know that nothing ever goes quickly. But at the end of the day, we're talking about runoff and diversion, whether it's from fire contamination or petroleum runoff, which I think you may find we have had for forty years. Capping the site mitigates ground runoff. And catch basins mitigate contamination beyond the perimeter of the property. And this is actually in the works, and I'm not sure if you're all aware of this. The school committee, when they passed their budget, they included a joint transportation department through the school committee and a town facilities plan. And they have approved it, so it will now come to you for approval for repaving, capping the site, and improving the catch, the catch basin. And I just want to, I want to state that I am in support of that, that suppression and mitigation. And if there were to be some sort of a disaster, remediation is absolutely possible without, without having Westerly turn into Flint, Michigan. So that's that. Thank you. Thank you for keeping an eye on that, Rose. It's important.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience that would like to speak at this time about the agenda items? Seeing none. Counselor's response? Counselor Lupitra?
Thank you, Ben. Happy Thanksgiving, belated and so on and so forth. Joy, I just wanted to address the school bus garage. It's a discussion only tonight, and we, we kind of have the wrong zoning tables attached to the agenda. The only two zones I was really concerned with would be the wellhead protection zone in the aquifer overlay district. I know, is all of it on there? Okay, I, I, I saw more than, that's only two things I'm really interested in at all, as far as zoning goes. And all we're doing is having a discussion about if there was a disaster, and the new, the new variable is the electric buses and, and the cobalt and the lithium and, and the manganese and all the different pollutants that if there were a fire that could get into our water. So, and it may be just as simple as moving a few buses to outside of the wellness protection zone in Aquifer Overlay District. And that, that's it. That's as far as we're gonna go with that tonight, and then we'll just see how that, that, where that takes us.
Anyone else like to speak at this time?
I'm just, I'm not clear on what, Joy, what capping the site would mean, if I would think that that would be to secure the basin so that nothing can escape. That, that would be my guess. I, I'm not familiar with that term. But yeah, I, I unfortunately had to find this, and I actually got some help from a few people who brought it to my attention. And Mr. Lupitra, the water, the zones are both here on the aquifer. The, the aquifer and the wellhead protection zone are all, are all on here. So we'll be discussing that further down the road here today. Thank you.
Council Healy?
Thank you both. Thank you for coming, Ben. Thank you for the little bit of a history, just to keep the night going. I appreciate it. Joy, yes, I am very well aware of everything that the school committee had been working on, on this property. It was done very publicly. Everything was readily available for anybody to see. And unfortunately, this was put on our plates out of nowhere, without taking any of that work from the school committee into consideration. So I am looking forward to seeing how this discussion will go, and we will talk more at that point.
Thank you. Any other comments at this time? You know, I'm gonna wait until the Agenda eight E comes up, and I'll, I'll state my, my positions. But let's move on to consent calendar, approval of minutes, regular, eleven seventeen twenty five. Do you have a motion?
I'd make a motion to adopt the amendments. Where are, I'm sorry, I wasn't paying attention. So we're in the adoption of minutes, Chris?
Yeah, section five, consented calendar, A.
I would like to make a motion to adopt the minutes as amended.
I don't know that they've been amended yet.
I amended them, yeah, and Mary sent out an email to everybody.
Okay, I missed it.
It wasn't a big amendment, it was.
Okay.
You could read it for us if you want.
But this discussion. This discussion?
Want me to second that? I can second that now.
I was out walking my dog when these came in. Okay.
Is it okay if I have the floor?
Please, Counsel Healy.
I did look at the amendments, proposed amendments, but I then went back and listened to the meeting. So those amendments, they're not in line with how our meeting went. They are, that's not how the meeting went. You did second, Rose, very clearly.
Did I second or did I request it? If I second the motion?
Seconded her request.
Okay, that's not, that's not requesting it. These aren't my words. So, so even though I did second her motion, I didn't request it. These is,
Well, if somebody is requesting,
Like meaning to me, yeah.
If somebody is requesting something and you second it, that means you are supporting that.
I'm not requesting. No, that way we would say that any, I'm supporting her, her desire to have something talked about at a town council meeting. I would never, my words, you think my words would ever be that I would request a newspaper article from the Wesley Sun, it'd be used as a source document. I think anyone knows me knows it.
No, but you did say I will support and I will second that.
And if you go back and you watch it, and if you watch a meeting, you'll see that I actually cleaned up this, the entire, the entire agenda referral. And if you saw that, what I said, the agenda referral was changed on the spot with Chris. He was, he was asking me what the agenda referral would be and I turned it to, and I have my notes here too. If you go and read it, if you go watch the tape, environmental discussion and assessment and discussion on the bus depot location. So,
Correct. Bus depot and wondering if it was too early to talk about capital requests. That was how the conversation.
Purchase and the cost, the purchase and the cost.
Capital request was the quote.
Point of order, we're recording what, what the minutes are.
The main point of this is the second part that is being asked to be changed. That part didn't happen at all. And I personally believe that this is only being brought to light because it was brought to light during the school committee meeting. So if it is being changed.
What was brought to light during the school committee meeting?
We're not having a debate. Let's just have one counsel speak and then the other.
For the record, I just want to repeat what was said, quote unquote. I'd say the school committee has proven time and time again that they don't even have the bandwidth to understand this. I don't know why we want to include them. They're the problem.
Is that in the minutes?
The part that Counsel LaPietra wants to edit changes what he said.
This was referring to the purchase of the electric buses and the money spent in electric buses. And I stand by that. I don't think the school committee has ever done a good job with any, any financial aspect of their duties. And this is just another example of that. I mean, go back to the,
We're not here to debate.
Well, no, no, well, then they,
You had to speak to the minutes.
All right, then the quote was this, and we're just defining this. This was, this was the two things I was talking about, the purchase of electric buses and the cost of electric buses. So if you want to just change it back to exactly what I said, this, all I did here was define what this is. So that's up to you guys. I don't really care either way.
Okay, so there's, there's motion discussion. My discussion, typically the minutes can refer you to the, to the tape where it's verbatim and nuances of the tape can't be hidden. So.
Verbatim on the tape is this. I was just defining what this was. That's up to you guys. I don't, it doesn't matter to me. Mr. President.
Just to be consistent, I know I have this discussion with Counsel Yellow often, so.
I don't know that often. I was just going to say, I think, I think the changes kind of cleans it up a little bit, makes it a little more clear. There's no harm in it. I mean, and, and, but I will be abstaining from the vote because I left early on advice of the solicitor, I should abstain. So,
Okay.
Thank you.
Counsel Shalaba?
But if changes are what is intended, what you, what you've mentioned and what you believe is what you wanted to, to say, and it is not your actual words, what you said, that shouldn't be, that shouldn't happen.
I said it in English.
We have to go by the minutes and what they actually say.
Any other discussion? Yes.
I'm going to direct a question to Counsel LaPietra if that's okay. Just would you mind withdrawing your motion just so I can take a look at the tape and and we can address this again next meeting?
If you want to. I mean, if you guys make it easier, I mean, this is just a minute. This is not a big change. I don't really want to get into a big thing. If you want to just change it to my exact words, you could even, you could use bandwidth. I don't care because the Counsel LaPietra felt that the school committee did not understand this. That's fine. That would be verbatim. I don't, that's fine with me. And all I'm saying, and I want to leave my other change though, just because I second a motion, there's a lot of, there's a lot of motions that Rose Van Dover may, may bring in here. I may second them for discussion. It doesn't mean that I'm even going to vote for them.
Yeah, that's,
I'm not requesting it, you know, so it was her request. So,
I'm fine with those ones. I just want to double check what the context was around this, this thing we're talking about here.
I would remove my motion. It, I'm just going to float an idea just to get this over with tonight. If you want to keep it verbatim, you could say Counsel LaPietra felt that the school committee did not understand this. And now we keep it verbatim to what I said on the, on the tape, if you want to do that.
That sounds amenable to me.
Okay, then I'm going to make, I'm going to withdraw my motion.
I'll withdraw my second.
And I'm going to make a motion to amend the minutes. Well, let's see how I'm going to do this now. I'm going to, the change, the change, Mary's amendment says the money spent on electric buses, to just call that this. So, so instead of saying where it says the money spent on electric buses, just plugged it into what I said verbatim that night, and that is T H I S. How's that? The money spent. No, it just says the school committee did not understand this. That's what I said verbatim. So you leave it like that.
What about if we just wait until the next meeting so everybody can listen to the tape?
I'm okay proceeding with this motion if there's a second in discussion.
Yes, second. Let's get this over with.
I'll second that.
Second. Is there a discussion on the revised minutes? I, I would say this, this is something, the tape is going to,
Yeah.
Be the record.
Yeah, simple as that.
For all of our discussions, executive and public.
So then why do we keep changing and amending the minutes if the, if the tape is, is our, our Bible?
You got, you got me there. I don't know the counsel I've sat on has, has this, this adjutant for the record. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Call for the vote. All in favor of amended minutes?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Two opposed. Four, two, three, four. Four approved, two, two opposed. One abstention. Thank you. Counsel Shalaba. Moving on. 5B, no physical matters. 5C, no resignations. Six, no public hearings. Seven, no unfinished business. We're moving on to eight, new business. I'd ask that the council suspend Town Council Rules of Procedure Rule 9D. Council operations to discuss and consider the following items.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor of,
Aye.
Aye.
Suspending the rules. Rules are suspended. Item 8A, Resolution of the Town of Wesley in support of the Coastal Resources Management Council's CRMC. Possible designation of Noiseneck Road as a CRMC designated right of way. Discussion and possible action.
Motion to approve.
Motion made.
Second.
And seconded by Counsel Healy. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion, motion approved. Resolution approved. Thank you, Counselor, Solicitor Conley for your work in that. 8B, Resolution 24 slash 25 dash 78, requesting Wesley's delegation to the General Assembly, submit legislation to amend Rhode Island General Lou's rules or behind general law. 3 dash 7 dash 27, insurance requirements to include the Town of Westerly. Discussion and possible action to reaffirm.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. Counsel Shalaba? Hearing no discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's a resolution approved. 8C, proposal ordinance and ordinance repealing Article 2, Holiday Sales of Chapter 202 of the Wesley Code of Ordinances entitled Retail Sales. Discussion and possible action.
Motion to order advance for public hearing on 121525.
Motion made to order for public hearing, advertise for public hearing on 1215. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Niemeyer. Discussion.
I have a question. I'm not real clear what, we're just removing some things here for dates or can, can I get a clarification?
Yeah, the state is repealing the holiday license. So, yeah, so we have to remove it from our ordinances.
Okay, so, and then this will go to a public hearing to find out if everybody's okay with that, so to speak?
The state is no longer requiring businesses to obtain a holiday license.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ordinance is advertised, ordered to advertise for a public hearing on 121525. Counsel Yellow? And Counsel Niemeyer? How's my memory? 8D, Propose ordinance and ordinance and amendment of Chapter 121 of the Wesley Code of Ordinances entitled Fee Schedule. Discussion and possible action. Order advertise for public hearing on,
So moved.
121525.
Motion to order advertise public hearing on 121525.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Counsel Van Dover. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ordered to advertise for 1215 25. Item 8E, School Bus Garage Use and Environmental Compliance. Discussion only. This was originally raised by the, this issue was originally raised by the planning board in a letter to the Town Council to, to review of, of the use of the bus garage. So I asked the planning board if, if they are available to attend and participate in the school committee, if they are willing to participate. Please, please, we'll ask for comments at that point.
Point of order.
You're going to explain tonight. Point of order?
Yeah, I'd actually like to, before we actually even start any discussion on this, ask Solicitor Conley if we're going to be in violation of Title 16 of having this discussion about the school.
At the, if it's to the chair, like, this is about the protection of our water supply. I don't believe it's just a school committee issue. But yes, Counsel, Solicitor Conley.
Is the school committee, is the school committee in charge of water supply?
It needs to make sure it's directed a certain way and it doesn't deviate the conversation. So I'd like clarification from the solicitor, please.
Solicitor Conley, please opine on the,
Yes, surely bates upon my review of the information that is to be discussed tonight. We will not intrude upon any of the jurisdiction of the schools department pursuant to Title 16, so we can proceed.
So we are, we are cleared to discuss. No action, but discussion only. Yes, sir.
Mr. President, if I may, I'm the one that brought this forward, so I think that I should be able to give a little explanation. Having the school committee here is, is a moot point. It's not even about that. It's about the simple fact that our school buses are parked in, I'm sorry, our school buses are parked in a zone that they don't belong in. And I know that that happened many, many years ago. And I do believe they've been grandfathered in. My concern is the aquifer protection zone. And it has nothing to do with the school committee at all. So that's a moot point. This was something that I wanted to bring forward and I've also spoken to members of our planning board here. I wanted to make it, make people aware of the fact that, that these EVs, specifically EVs, are sitting on our aquifer. Now, they're going to go into more detail about what happens when one of these buses catches on fire and that, that we frankly cannot put out the fire and all of the chemicals that will, and the thousands, I mean, the hundreds of gallons of waters that have to be put onto this to put it, to try to contain the fire because there is no way to put it out. It literally just has to burn out. Not to mention the other EVs and, and anything else around it that catches fire. So the concern is the chemicals being released from the batteries if in fact one of these does catch on fire. All that water and all those chemicals are going to breach the basin in which they sit in currently and leach into our water supply. That's the concern. It's, it's really not about the gas because the gas and the oil from the gas powered buses can be contained because of the basin that, in which they sit. However, the EVs cannot. So I brought this forward to find out what in fact we could possibly do to rectify the situation. This was not meant to get anybody up in arms. This was just simply a way of protecting our waters, our water. That's it. That was it for me. I'm not after anybody's head or looking to cut anybody's, you know, neck. I just want to find out what we can do to protect our water. And that's it in a nutshell. Thank you.
I appreciate that statement of your, your concerns and they're not unrecognized. They are recognized and I think this all stemmed from the planning board's concern with their letter of June that, that came, came to the, to the council. And as a matter of action, the town manager took this very seriously and he's in the process of, of demonstrating that the RIDM rules, the RIDOH rules, you know, alluded to by, by former Counsel Cordio, the MS4 stormwater system and keeping that up to date. And the school committee's commitment to upgrading the bus garage through their capital program to create an acceptable RIDM cap to that, that site is something that I, I thought was a concern that would, would, should be addressed and we should tell the public what we are doing to address that concern and, and, you know, with that overview, your overview and what I've just given as an overview, I'd like to defer to the manager who's, who's dropped a couple exhibits on our, our table and also has been working behind the scenes, if you will, on,
Yes, so,
show compliance.
The letter was provided to us by the planning board chair on September 22nd is when we received, the council received this letter. Matt O'Neill gave his presentation. Everyone received the, the letter that was prepared by the planning board, which is attached to the agenda. So I, and also was attached, the bigger page of it from the 2020 comprehensive plan is basically the water district. That's the whole aquifer protection system and it kind of gives you an overview of where it is. And to give you an idea, so the, just to go through the legend, I'll just go through it quickly. So the, the community wellhead protection area, that's the red hash marks, you're three, there's three zones. Those are all our wells. Those are where the wells are actually located within those zones, right? So that's the community wellhead protection area. Non-community wellhead protection area, we don't have. There's no blue hash marks. There's no non-community. People do have individual wells on their property. They're not outlined in this overlay map that was prepared. The groundwater reservoir is just that. The lighter blue is the actual reservoir that the, the wells are actually drawing the water from underground. And then you have the groundwater, that's the darker blue. That's the darker blue. So you see the small areas. Those aren't necessarily actually located right above the wells. The wells are drawing water from the groundwater recharge area. So the groundwater recharge area is, is bigger. You can see it's, it's blue, it's bigger. And that's what's basically supplying water. It goes from there to the darker blue area, the groundwater reservoir. And the green area, the sole source aquifer is actually, so the green water goes to the light blue water, goes to the dark blue water. We're pulling it all up through our wells. And then obviously the boundary, you can see it's a little bit north of Shore Road. So anything in the white down by the beach area is, is not of, and I don't want to say not of concern, but it's not of concern for aquifer protection area. So it gives you an idea. So if you're looking at this, probably 80% of the town is covered in the aquifer protection area. So it's a map to show you the different outlines and the importance in areas. The crucial areas is the community wellhead protection area is where our wells are drawing water from. But you can see it's being water that's sourced. But you can see it's being water that's sourced from eighty percent of the town. The second one, I was asked by a counselor to provide a zoning map. So just for clarification, my research, unless you have something different with this, the bus garage is in a permitted zone area for its use. You can use bus garages are permitted in G one and L one. And it's my understanding that the bus garage is the purple up in left-hand corner. And that's in the proper zone area where it's actually, now, I'm not disputing the fact that it's over the aquifer area, but it is in the properly zoned area of where bus garage, bus storage is bus storage is allowed in any of the purple areas in town. If you look at every single purple area in town, it's in this, it's outlined in the aquifer protection map. But it is zoned correctly where it sits. Not saying it has been there for forty-plus years, but it currently is zoned protect, is zoned correctly where it is. So what we did when we got the letter in talking to the President Duhamel, we, and I'd mentioned this before, got a hold of Par Engineering. We contracted with Par Engineering in October to basically do a study of the bus garage and give us that property, give us options. What are some options? Is there a way we can contain things? Is there a better way of capping the site? And and so which they're in the process of doing, we probably are not going to receive that report back till early spring is what they're saying. And they're gonna come up with ideas. They may come back and say it shouldn't be there. They may come back and say, if you do X, Y, Z, you can do that. So the superintendent is aware of this. I've had discussions with him on it. I know part of their capital request proposal is to repave that area, repave the bus garage. It was on last year also, but it's it's on for this year. And but we will know long before that budget goes into effect if, in fact, that is an option. There may be other containment strategies. I also reached out to the fire chief to see what kind of concern he had. He's gonna try to get me some information to see what concern he had on the school bus. He doesn't have any concern. He's it. I'm not saying he didn't say he didn't have any concern at all, but it's not top on his priority list. There were thousands of cars, thousands of electric cars per day, traveling over this entire aquifer protection area. Every single day of the week, thousands of cars on a roadway that could get in a car accident. His concern is an accident. If it gets in an accident and there's a fire as a result of an accident, that becomes a concern, right? That becomes a concern of theirs because it does use the nexus. As far as parked vehicles charging, again, anything can happen. Nothing's saying, you know, no one's saying anything can't happen. But the likelihood is minimal. It's something to be of concern. But, you know, where to park, you know, where you could possibly put these buses if it was a grave concern as a result of the study we haven't done, I guess we can look into that if they have to relocate it to a different location. But, you know, he, the fire chief also mentioned, is anyone, you know, some concern, well, what about the twenty-five diesel buses parked on this? Because there's there's diesel and gasoline vehicles. And I agree, the concern is the amount of water you have to put in the watershed. I mean, what runs off? So he's trying to get some research. They're also coming, they're coming up with new measures of fire prevention. I'm putting this out, chemicals that can help things and and so forth. There's all kinds of measures in place to assist with this as there is millions of vehicles in this country that travel the roadways every day that are powered by electric only. So this is the stuff that we have going on. Again, we won't have anything till the spring. We put it down for discussion tonight as a request of the council. So if there's questions on some of these maps, I mean, I know the overlay, I mean, the zoning map is, I printed it well, as big as, I guess we could go bigger, so you might have to use a ruler to find out where you are if you kind of look at the road and some of those dark colors. So in that, that's an overview.
Thank you.
May I ask the town manager just a quick question on the zoning map?
We'll open up to the council. You want to go first?
I just wanted to ask him if we can, is this online? Because I couldn't find it. Because then you can zoom in on what you need, what you would need to see if you really wanted to look.
It's on the comprehensive plan.
Are you, what is what online?
The zoning map. They used
Zoning map.
It used to be, I mean, in my experience, I've I've gone online and pulled up a zoning map like this and been able to zoom into the parcel I'm looking at.
I didn't do that. This was printed offline, so it's online. Now, if you're asking me if the program allows you to zoom in, I mean, I'm zooming in, I'm zooming in on the use table on this computer right now. I'm sure I can, if there was a map, I'm
Right, this wasn't, you didn't get this on the town, the town website, right? Because I couldn't find it on the town, was it?
And this one here, the aquifer one.
GIS?
I had it on my computer today, zooming in.
Okay, that's what I wanted. Thank you.
Yeah.
Council Petra?
Just to just to clarify, Sean, what you said is, I think you told us basically a lot of the data is still out and we're looking, you know, we don't really know all the ramifications of the fire chief didn't appear in it. And I would like to say, if that's what you're saying, it sounds like you are, I would like to say this is the exact reason being part of any pilot program is not a smart idea.
You lost me on that one.
The school committee decided that they wanted to be the pioneers for electric buses. And it was a pilot program for the state of Rhode Island. And I, as a rule of thumb, I try to stay away from pilot programs because these are the kind of things that may pop up.
We're not, the school committee is here if they want to speak to that, but the capital improvement capital budget was do you want to hear from this? Yeah, and and it was a funding issue and compliance with the former administration for EV vehicles. I mean, there's a whole story behind that, but we have the planning board in front of us that wrote the the memo received September twenty-two. You would like to add to that, Mr. Gunny or?
Yeah. So one of the one, one of our meetings, we're going through on town-owned property. And they were listing various town-owned properties and someone, we're on the bus garage, bus garage is listed in somewhere, it's like, and we're getting EV buses. And so some of us, they'd just been in EV bus fire at another municipality and up in Massachusetts. And it just happened to be on the news and it was like, oh, my gosh. Because in terms of the water supply, that area is very, very sensitive. So Wesley gets its water from the ground. Wesley wells are very, very shallow. They're not deep wells. It's sand and gravel, and it's mostly this water that rains and goes through the ground, works its way under and gets into the area. The well recharge areas, that area that you see that has all the crosses on it, that water goes to those wells fairly quickly. And in in our experiences, you know, having worked at Public Works, having worked up there as a counselor, surface level pollution is is important. So we looked at the tables and sure enough, the table says, if you wanted to put a bus garage there and came before the planning board, we deny it. It's not allowed there. Again, it was grandfathered, nobody's fault and and
You interrupt. It is, it is allowed there. Where the bus garage is, it is permitted.
On the aquifer protection zone?
No, no, well, I'm talking the zoning table for the town.
It is. And then line four, under transportation, school bus storage, if you go to APZ, aquifer aquifer protection zone. And next one, WPZ, wellhead protection zones, there are ends there.
I'm telling you, just according to the current zoning tables for the town, general industrial and light industrial are permitted for school bus storage.
Light industrial would allow it.
It would allow.
But
But I'm not saying the chart's right. I'm not saying
What you just handed was this chart. I'm reading your chart. And if you look in the next columns over.
Yeah.
So you're in light industrial? Okay, so keep going, ORAT, OSR, CR, and APZ, aquifer protection zone. And WPZ, I believe, is wellhead protection zone.
Right.
And if you look at the bottom, there's the ends.
Yeah, but I think if you if you look at the map and where it goes, it's in the it's in the 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 light blue area, which is groundwater reservoir and community wellhead protection area.
Right.
So it's it's, I don't, it does not, if I'm looking at the map correctly, it doesn't look like it falls into the groundwater reservoir.
It's
But I'm not
According to this, according to this map, the GIS and and I have put it in.
It's in a G one zone, not a L one. Yes.
Industrial, yes, it is. But when you look at the online GIS, and I don't know if you can pull it up here and share it, but the online GIS, if you put in the address of that and you see an outline of that property and you do the drop-down menu and you click on wellhead protection zone comes over the whole property.
I think the point of this map is that the whole town is in that zone.
Pretty much, the whole northern part of the town. And and the manager is right. If you look at town, it's a big a big old L where it isn't. It's down along the lower part of town downtown here and all along the coastline, because all that water runs either to the river, it runs to the sea. But the water up above runs to our wells. So, um, so this is the, so the planning board had a discussion because under the Rhode Island General Law and under the ordinance of the town of Westerly, we are to measure and abate and prevent air and water pollution. We are to conserve and utilize of the natural resources, including sound, soil, groundwater or surface water, minerals, plant, animal life and topographical features. And we are to, under nine, where where it's tasked with protection and survival from disaster. The probabilities that this will occur are fairly low. If it occurs, it's a whole other level.
No, no one is questioning the planning board's motive or dedication?
I'm just going through the logic as to we apply it. So we, and I didn't get that. I'm just giving background for education for folks. If they understand, why is the planning board suddenly, because we're charged with, as you well know, Chris, I mean, Mr. President. So the so the planning board put together a subcommittee, the manager, I mean, the chair, appointed myself. And we also had Mr. Divine and Mr. Nichols, from Jamie Nichols, who are both firemen. Or, and so they have experience with the fire aspect of it. So basically, that's it. We went through the process. We wrote the memo. We said this is a serious issue. Should we consider moving, should the town consider moving the bus garage? We believe you could. We believe you could reutilize the property for, it would make suggestion you could reuse like reutilize the property for another purpose of affordable housing if you want to.
Yeah, I would say that planning board's concerns are real and they they're they're very articulate and pointed in this memo. And it's been brought again to the manager's attention with the superintendent of water and hiring an environmental engineering firm to assess the the risk to the aquifer and compliance with RIDM and compliance with RIDOH regulations is is something that's prudent and something that has to be done. And I think before that, as Councilor Petra said, we really need that information before we jump to a different solution of moving it outside of just about anywhere in the in the town, so.
Mr. Chairman, there's a twofold or possibly threefold issue here with these EV buses. The exposure to water that's available and provided to many of the people in the town of Westerly, regardless, age, whatever, whatever background you are, everybody needs the water. It's a large risk. Taking some thought from people that present on other issues, if it saves just one community, it's worth it. On the other end, there's money that's dangled by the previous administration to encourage communities, municipalities, states, whatever, to go over to these alternate vehicles for public use. New York City's done it, deep-sixed it. Other cities, other towns have done it. They're inefficient. Part of what we don't see, and we've already deprogrammed, EV number eight. That's no longer in the projection. You look at qualifications and training for the people that have to maintain service, manage the storage, you have to upgrade your facilities. There is a host of things, cost-wise, that are below the waterline. On this tip of the iceberg, we have money to help us buy buses. When you need to have the battery serviced, you don't do it here. You send it out. How does that get sent out? It's something I can't use anymore. It's regulated waste. People aren't going to buy that battery thinking we can reuse it. They're going to charge you for shipping that and handling it. We also have, on the other end, other contingencies. Under NFPA, the cognizant fire official is absolutely required under eight fifty-five to develop an emergency contingency plan in case masked batteries, vehicles, spares or whatever should become involved in any kind of flood incident, fire or whatever else. And make sure that the appropriate personnel, be they town, everyday workpeople, they may be the first line of defense until the fire department gets there. The fire department may well need extra equipment, extra training and qualification. All of these need to be maintained. Preventative maintenance schedules must be developed as recommended by the manufacturer, and they must be maintained. The risk exposure there is if it's not done and there is an issue, the first place any underwriting authority or anyone else is going to go is, did you maintain it the way that you were supposed to? You tried to stop whatever was happening with people. Were they trained? Did they have the equipment? Were they practiced enough? Did they recertify annually? Where does all this money come from? The simplest way to really take a look at this is, one, they don't belong there with that kind of exposure. As mentioned earlier, in Massachusetts, there was a conflagration. Fortunately, they got there quick enough and they were able to extinguish it in about fifty minutes. Four engines pumping just under thirteen hundred gallons a minute, running for about forty-nine minutes and change. That is a lot of water.
That's a standard, though.
So that is a lot of water.
Two-hour, two-hour duration.
So that is actually, I would beg to differ. There are other services and demonstrations that will actually have these these engines or these cars when they're on fire, they put them in a modified thirty-yard dumpster. And they have to refill the dumpsters with water over a period of two to three days while this burns itself out submerged.
I think we're
Take a look at.
I think we're a little afield of the subject before us, though, respectfully. I think I could sum it up by saying recently, we went on a tour of the of the White Rock facility with the manager and some members of the of the planning board for the capital budget process. And we were informed by the the director, Mr. Spazato, that seventy-five percent of the town's water comes from the White Rock area. We do about, and I'll round it down to seven million gallons a day. So that would mean that five million, two hundred fifty thousand gallons of water on a daily, potentially on a daily basis, okay? In the summertime, we're using about six point four million. This time of year, we're using much, much less water is coming out of that area. So it's a scary, the scary part is for everyone involved is, we need all the facts. So I encourage that that we're going through and getting that information. But again, probability is low, but if it occurs, could be catastrophic. Our job on the planning board was to let you know that. We did that. We can answer any other questions that you have, but but that's where we're at.
No, as I said in the beginning, I don't mean to steal everyone's time here, but we are in thankful that you rose this issue and it's I'm not saying it wasn't an issue before, compliance with DEM, compliance with DOH, compliance with NFPA, which I didn't mention before, but compliance with NFPA, where we rely upon professionals that protect Westerly, compliance with the water, water department. That's that's not, that's not new, and it's something that we have to be diligent about, and we can never let our guard up. Sole source aquifer, we don't have a, we don't have a Plan B, so.
Mr. President, you've been I don't know how long I've been involved in town government, but you helped get me on the Public Works Committee at the beginning of all about water, all about water. You've been involved in it for decades.
Yes, since two thousand, I've been involved with protecting water supply and
You understand, you understand the challenges. You understand that all the regulatory agencies involved in it. We've also been through the situations where if something happens, you know, with a well where we've had, you know,
They had handle well back in the eighties.
Happens, they shut the well down.
It was in Stonington.
Right, till we make it right, so.
Shut down a water supply, it was, with most care.
The most important thing is is that no matter what, the the water supply in this town The most important thing is, is that no matter what, the, the, the water supply in this town and the town has taken every action to protect the water supply and to make sure that clean water went to the citizens of this town. And we've been very successful at it for a long, long time.
Yes. So, uh, any comments? Yes, Council Healy?
I, I have to like figure out where to start. So, Mr. Gagne, when was the first time that you started bringing up the, the transportation yard? Probably not being in the best box. It's been a bit, right?
It came, it came up, within the last year, it came up at a meeting.
No, I mean previously, previous times that this has been.
Oh, there was, there was a time back in, uh, actually when I was on the council, where the bus garage, back then it was just gas cars.
Exactly.
And, uh, the determination was that we needed to recap, you know, recover the, uh, the parking lot there and to make sure that we had a good plan on. And in the case of a solvent or a oil or anything gasoline or diesel leather onto the ground, um, it's a matter of speedy drive, it went very quickly. There was a change of a containment, uh, for the refueling. It was double walled and it's surrounded by a pit. And so it's double walled inside a pit that will hold the full contents of that tank in there. So there was upgrades made at that time to that garage. And again, um, we all, nobody, we didn't look at the table at the time, so. My bad, whatever was there.
Um, and then Counselor Vandover, I want to apologize. If I had sounded previously that I was coming for you on this particular situation, it wasn't, I, I honestly kind of feel like you've been used as a little bit of a pawn and I'm actually wanting to protect you for a second. So, um, I am, I am concerned for a few reasons. I fully heard you at the last meeting when you said multiple times, this is a zoning issue. I fully agree with you. The problem is, is that now, not you, not me, but folks are tiptoeing on what we can and can't talk about. So this was brought to us as a discussion only for zoning district use tables and, and the bus garage. But then that turned into talking about electric vehicle buses and the potential of us funding them, not funding them, getting rid of them, talking about pilot programs. We have a very thin rope that we have to walk on. And I don't think that you, Counselor Vandover, have crossed it over at all at this point. But I do see it being crossed over. So I, I want to not only protect you, but protect all of us from crossing over into an area where we're just legally not allowed to be. I, and because of that, because of the way that the conversation can get twisted sometimes, that's where my advocacy of having the school committee be here. Our superintendent would have been good, but not necessarily for here. I went through, I went backwards, the, the reason why I had known how, that you'd brought it up, I just, I, I work backwards. I just keep going backwards and try to find out where this actually started. I'm so thankful to you, Sean, for the amount of work that you were able to give us and the very quick responses that you were able to give me through email, through all of this. Because I am concerned that we are getting a little bit lost. So we have our planning board and our zoning and being tasked with a, a pretty poorly zoned town, to put it. Nothing is really zoned properly. Like, look at Route One, right? You guys are working on that. The zoning's crazy. I'm pretty sure Midas is zoned for a bed and breakfast. So like, I, I just want to really zone in on what the real problem here, because it's not the bus garage. It's not EV batteries. It's not firefighting foam. The core problem here is that Westerly zoning map is fundamentally misaligned with reality. And that is where, where the, the focus needs to be. And from what I believe was Counselor Vandover's concern is things are clearly in wrong areas. Things are not zoned right. Things haven't been touched in a little bit. It's time to do that. So, um, the only question that I've had, and I can't get the answer to, is if not there, where? If we are going to say that all of the buses cannot be on that location and your memo suggested having affordable housing there, if we can't have the buses or the bus yard there, then where? Because like Sean gave, uh, sorry, town manager Lacy gave us, where, it, it's all of town. Like, we're not going to put a bus yard on the Squamiket. So I, I don't, I, I see the problem. I hear the problem. I realize there's a problem. But what is the solution here? Where are we? And if we do have to move this bus yard, do we have to go to bond for that? How are we going to be able to afford a brand new bus yard with all of the things? And, and the point was brought up about the mechanics of specific types of vehicles. We already have a shop set up. So we would have to not only move shop, build shop. I, I mean, I'm seeing an election coming up and I'm seeing a $20 million bond in front of our, our constituents over a bus yard. That's where my concern comes in, because I just don't see where the answer is. I had mentioned, um, when Matt came and presented this to us, and I had asked these questions too, like, was the superintendent aware, like, they're talking about, you know, cementing. They were just talking about it at the last meeting, where, where's the disconnect here? And aside from the district use table, the only two locations, the two big locations that I can think of that aren't getting rid of open space or potentially using space that we could safely put housing are Bradford Elementary School and Tower Street. And that's terrible. And it will never happen, right? That will never happen, in my opinion, we're not going to do that, to those locations. So where? What do we do if this is the problem?
Well, Bradford would be a very bad place to put it.
I agree.
Bradford.
Exactly what I said.
It's overly aquifer. So you don't move it up from one portion of the offering to another portion of it.
What isn't?
If you look at.
Where can we put it that is not?
You look, if, well, the interesting, okay, so a couple.
Can I, Mr. President, can I just say a couple of quick things and then I gotta leave?
Okay.
All right.
I'll make, make that a combination.
Thank you. Thank you. No sense in spinning our wheels on what is and what is right now. We're going to have a, an environmental study done. We'll have more information then. And, you know, the school committee has their budgeting coming up. Uh, we're going to decide, I mean, the council has the authority to, to adjust the capital budgets and their bottom line. Um, so we do have the authority over purchasing school buses. And, and so there's.
No, we don't.
Several, several things, several things, um, to consider. And we have, and there, the cost, yes, the cost of electrical vehicles and, and the whole process, great or grave. And, and what do you do and where's this stuff go and how does it go and cause? And so, and, and I'm all for protecting our water. Yes. I'll be interested to see what the environmental study says on, if there are other things, what are the options that we can do? If it's not an option to keep it there, where can we put it? That's, you know, so we start floating things around, but we don't need to sit here tonight and play the what if game. And, uh, but I do appreciate the planning board taking interest in this and that adds a lot of weight to it. And, and I think it'll get a lot of good discussion. Um, so, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
If I, if I could continue answering the question from the council. So, so the, 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 the water that you have in that area, I, I heard Ms. Quamiket, you wouldn't want put in Ms. Quamiket, I wouldn't advise to put it down there with the salt there either. But, um, the water department brings in about six million, five to six million dollars in revenue every single year. And, um, that, uh, is a considerable amount of money that comes in on a routine basis. And to replace that would be very, very expensive, because we are pretty much out of, if you needed to replace five and a half or, or five million or three million gallons a day, you probably don't have anywhere in town you can do that. Um, so that's a challenge there. So you're up against it. Human, we, we have to drink water, human beings do. So, uh, where would you put it? You'd put it anywhere south of Route One, you could. If you look at where your middle school is located, your middle school is actually outside of the aquifer protection zones. And, uh, there's, there might be some opportunity, there may be some opportunity there. The question is, is which buses, how many buses? And you have to do this all as one giant bite of an apple? I think it's most important, as you said earlier, the school committee, the school committee absolutely needs to be involved. The superintendent was in a meeting the other day where this subject was brought up. He was unaware of certain aspects of it with regards to some of the challenges and the risks associated with it. And he's concerned too. Everybody cares. So I really, really strongly encourage that the council talks to the school committee before they determine that they want to make any investments further and place them there. The power of the town council is you can, you can determine where, with regard to town property.
Thank you for considering them. I appreciate you.
So that's great. It's a lot of working together, Council. Like you said.
A lot of what?
Not the job of the planning board to tell people it really can't go there, but you could put it here, there, or wherever. Usually, most of the time, we'll look at another application, another consideration to say, okay, this works with the exception of one or two other little things. However, in the interest of the greater part of the people of Westerly, we kind of tried to look at a few places where this particular pebble might come out of the shoe and have one or two places that it could work if we were careful. And that seemed to be probably the better one.
Thank you. Counselor LaPietra?
I think that Mr. Gagne and Mr. Divine get it. I'm not sure, I'm, I'm not going to try to fill my fellow councils under the bus, but I've heard, uh, Counsel Healy and Counsel Vandover try to call this a zoning district issue. It's not a zoning district issue. I don't care what it's zoned. It's, it's a water issue. It's, it's an environment. That's why it's listed on our, as new business as, as environmental compliance. I don't care what zone we're in. I mean, this is about protecting our water, so. Uh, it doesn't, we have to look past zoning here and just protect our water. And I want to, I would say two things here. Um, one is, we absolutely do have the right to deny a capital request. I would say until the data comes in, and I could change my mind, I could do a complete 180 in, in the spring when the data comes in and they say this is no problem, I could do a 180 very easily. But I don't know how we approve any, the capital request for any more electric buses in the meantime. They call it a six month moratorium, all right? And, and that just seems to be common sense. Let's not buy any more until we get the data and, and hopefully we know by the spring. And the second point I'd like to make is if we do, we always want a solution. And, uh, Sean gave us a map. It does say 2020 comprehensive plan map. When I went on the computer last night, like Mr. Gagne, Mr. Divine were saying, it looked to me like 80% of the middle school would be okay. That, that possible looks like about 80, the first 20% of it looks like it nips the, the aquifer zone on the computer last night. But it looks like we have plenty of room there. The runoff would go south, so I think the runoff is going in the right direction. I think that the middle school could be a solution, but we, we don't know yet if we need to move it. Let's find out if we need to move it, but in the meantime, how irresponsible would it be to keep buying these buses in the meantime until we have all the data? And that's like, of course, it's a town council decision. They're going to bring us a capital request and we say, hold your horses, seven, you probably shouldn't have bought the first seven yet, but okay, and in the meantime, we get the data and then if we end up liking what we see, we could buy more or we could abort.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Nemire?
Well, thanks guys for doing this. This is, this is concerning. And I'm glad that you've done it and brought it to our attention back in September and coming to discuss it with us now. Um, we are waiting on that study from DEM, uh, coming in the spring. Are you advocating that we take any action prior to getting that information?
It's not necessarily the opposition to advocate one way or the other. We make a recommendation. We've made a recommendation, take all these considerations into account.
Yes.
It is absolutely a zoning application issue. They are smaller pieces of a greater puzzle, which is protection of our water resource. So when we kind of look at this from the 10,000 foot level, we're looking at all the different bits of reasoning, logic, whatever, trying to put all this together. And how do we address things without being in violation of our own zoning, our own ordinances, where we can put things where we can't? Sometimes we realize that we kind of painted ourselves into a corner or built a boat in the basement. And other times through speaking amongst ourselves, a little bit more relaxed, that you know what? We realize that there are a couple of things that we can do. But the big thing is, look at all the exposures, operations, costs. There's a lot of hidden risk for the town. And our big issue is, yes, the likelihood, risk and probability in a table, risk of something happening, okay? The instances, probably very, very low. But as the gas plume event in the eighties, right? When they do happen, and it won't be a question of if, when it does, it will be severely impactful. The days of the deep well are gone. So at this point, with everything being so shallow, it's affected a little bit differently than water, oil, gasoline or whatever. Now we're talking about heavy metals present in runoff and a few other things. And once that's in the ground, it will move, it will go deeper of its own volition once it's there. And it's very difficult to remove. So the best way is to address it. It's a problem where it is. Do we either A, not have the problem at all? Or B, do we put it somewhere else where we can control that hazard? Whether it's just, as John was illustrating earlier, do we just move certain ones to an alternate location and then figure out how to address the rest? Or is it several bites of the apple and we just migrate certain ones at a time until eventually we can manage that cost and eventually move them all out of where they are and possibly free up that place for housing or other use that would not be a threat to the aquifer? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing this information to us.
Sorry. Last comment? Oh, you want to, you still on the floor? Go ahead.
Sorry, I just wanted to say, just wanted to say thanks for bringing this information, for facilitating this discussion. Thank you.
Counselor.
It is a zoning issue and it's a water issue. It's both, okay? Aquifer zone, that's a zone. We're in breach of that zone right now and that affects our water. So it is both. I agree with holding off maybe on buying more EV buses, because we really shouldn't be putting any more buses where there's a risk of a hazard. Okay? It isn't, it isn't necessarily the gas and the oil. It's the EVs, because it is the manner in which you have to contain the fire and the amount of water you would need to do so, which would be near impossible to contain on that site. So that's the concern for me. Yeah, buying more buses at this point would be a kind of a moot point. Again, I'm, I'm not even thinking along the lines of moving the gas buses. I'm thinking of the EVs. Get them away from our water. I, I don't see why there's any reason why we can't just move them if we have to do that. But again, we'll, we'll wait for the report and what it says and we'll go from there. But thank you for all your hard work, you guys. And, um, yeah, I, I, and thank you, Counselor Healy, for recognizing the fact that I had good intentions. It wasn't about the school, it wasn't about anything but our water supply. So thank you. I appreciate that.
Counselor Shalaba?
Um, quick question. Have you guys had this discussion with the superintendent of schools?
We did, actually there was a discussion the other day, um, as part of the capital, capital budget process, uh, because we was meeting with the subcommittee of the, of the, uh, planning board, myself, Jamie Nicholas and Perry Kellogg. And the, the subject did come up, but it didn't, you know, again, this whole awareness thing on it just didn't come up until happenstance at a meeting. And, and, uh, so yes, his level of awareness was not as high as, as, as we're talking about tonight. So that he needs to be involved in the, in the discussion. If, if the town wants to buy EV buses, the town will buy EV buses. That's not, the planning board is not taking a position on that, okay? The planning board doesn't take a position on that, uh, unless you ask them to. But, but the planning board is saying is, is EV buses in a wellhead protection area are a challenge. And it's a risk. And. And, you know, if you can cite those vehicles elsewhere, you diminish the risk significantly.
Well, I'm going to take it a step further. What would you say about EV cars? That's a whole other question. We, we want to really go there.
Same thing, yeah.
Okay. But, um, I think we need to actually, you know, wait till we get the report because at this point, I appreciate the information and what you've brought forward to us. But I feel that if we just don't have the other pieces of the puzzle, we're kind of putting the cart before the horse without having all the documentation. I understand that, you know, right now we're still in a very slippery slope. That's why I had asked for a point of, you know, that's why I had asked Solicitor Conley to make sure we don't go down that slippery slope because, you know, e- earlier with talking about things that maybe we are going to cause problems with the school committee. So I, I do appreciate everything you said. I, I do appreciate we have to get the, the other information. And, um, I, it is definitely a water issue to me. It's, it's a water issue. And thank you.
You're welcome.
Understanding the level of the risk, it's not unlike planning for a seasonal disaster like a hurricane. Some of them are minimal, most of the time. We plan for and understand the mean where most of them fall. But really, as a town, we prepare for the extreme risk and the extreme impact. We should be doing the same here.
Without question. It's a water supply protection issue. And, um, there's nobody in this room tonight that doesn't disagree with that. Concerned is acknowledged that planning board resident wrote, rose the issue to this high level. And, uh, there's an action plan that's, that's in place. In the past, compliance has been received from the DEM, from the DOH, simply by capping the site or improving the stormwater management system. This is new now, potentially. The EV buses could create a new issue. We need to have that evaluated by our environmental engineer, our fire chief. Need to evaluate it with our IDM, the RDOH, and then implement it with our water superintendent, implement it with the school superintendent and the school committee. And it's all going to be facilitated by the town manager. He's the point person. He's, he's the one that's in touch with everybody and he's, he's making certain that the town's protection of the water supply is first and foremost. So I, that, that's the position that we're in today. I know this has been discussed in September and has been discussed recently as far as the capital budget is concerned. But this, this is where we're at and we're in the middle of it with, uh, town manager Lacy.
Man, one more thing?
Sure.
Okay. So the school committee hasn't been heard on this. We do not know what the school committee, and I would say the school committee is just as concerned as everyone else.
Of course they are.
So that would be the, that would be where I was aware, where I'd approach from. And I would just ask that we cooperate together and we all have an open mind.
The, the capital budget, I don't mean to, their, their capital budget included recapping the site and improving, uh, water quality.
Can I make a point of clarification?
Sure.
President, I just want to, everybody to know that this EV buses were on their capital improvement. They did, they denied them. So that is why I keep saying we can't be talking about money when it comes to the school committee. I know other people are saying that the buses were on, they're not. Electric buses are not on their improvement plan. So I really need everybody to hear that out loud. Thank you.
I didn't know that. The capital budget could be approved. Thank you, Councilor Healy, for that.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you for, for attending, uh, planning board members, Gagné and Divine. Uh, moving on, communications and reports. Uh, first, the liaison reports, if anybody go down the line, Councilor Vanover?
Um, I was at the concerts on the beach, um, which is such a pleasant experience compared to some of the other boards. So they are, they're already getting ready for next year. They're going to be incorporating that 250th emblem on their, their hats and their shirts that they're going to get. So, and they did really, really well last year with the sales of, of all of there because Concerts on the Beach was 25 years. So they did really well with their sales and, um, um, you know, they're not asking us for any money, but they, they are already gung ho for, for next season and they're doing a great, great job. So I just wanted to give them kudos because they really do deserve it. They did a great job and they're very excited about the 250th.
Thank you. Councilor Peter?
Nothing to report.
Okay. Councilor Shalaba?
Just a couple of things. The senior center had its, um, lunch for, um, everybody for Thanksgiving and it was the biggest turnout they've had, um, in, in years. And it was done very nicely. I think they had over like 200 people there. Yeah, they, both rooms were completely full.
Yeah, the other councils attended or?
Counselor, yep, Vanover and Councilor LaPietra attended.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. Good turkey, good turkey dinner there. I liked it, yeah.
Yes. The Westerly Library in, uh, January, January 23rd, 26th, from six to nine, they're doing a murder mystery. And, uh, tickets are available on their website. It actually, if you're into that, it sounds like it could be a lot of fun. That's one of their big things they're planning. And I know that this week they're also having a gingerbread house display over, over at the library. And then the, the, this Wednesday, um, they're at downtown, they're doing the, uh, holiday stroll.
Very good. Thank you. Councilor Healy?
And today is the first day of the Nutcracker Trail with the Chamber of Commerce. It's nutcrackertrail.com and it is, um, very, it, it's all around Westerly, Mystic. There's even some involved in town. So, um, that is, was a very good kickoff meeting. We have some incredibly talented people in this town. It was really amazing.
Councilor Niemeyer, you got grants for us?
Well, I would like us to apply for the, uh, National Endowment for the Humanities, rediscovering our revolutionary tradition grant for 25K. Um, and that will be something I'm going to be requesting of the manager when we get to that part, um, as it relates to our 250th commission. With regards to what Councilor Healy just said, I just wanted to add the Town of Westerly Nutcracker is, looks great. Kudos to the artist.
Yeah, the chamber did a great job organizing that and, and unveiling it uh, last Friday. Moving now to town council reports. Sean, you got Everett Ave approved? It's on your report, but it was really the, uh, the credit of council.
That is already marked and has been marked. I mean, that was the one we had all kinds of vandalism on the sign, but it is, uh, that is marked accordingly. And it's, that's one of the entry points for vehicles, so.
Thank you. Any comments on the council report? Moving to, uh, manage, managers' report.
So I had two things on it. Um, one was the, um, roundabout study at the request of, uh, Councilor Iello. It asked for a status update and you can see that the, as we know, nothing really goes quick with the state side of things. But, um, so they had, they're wrapping up the benefit cost analysis of it, of the portion of the study. And they're looking to discuss at some point, you know, come up with their plans. To just remind you, I sent, I also attached a letter that was sent, you know, back in February when the council decided to send these to them to, to be discussed or in support of those, the two studies that are being done. Two roundabouts, 91, McGowan's Corner, which is a corner where you can head to Walmart or head to Bradford. And the other one is the end of Church Street. So, um, I was, I did a follow-up on those. And the second one was Nyhat report to the, uh, the pension, the police pension. And, um, you know, the good news is it's in 82.7% funded, which is probably in the top three or in the state. So we're in good shape as far as that goes. So it's, it's good. I mean, you can read the whole report. Bottom line is 80, 82.7% funded.
Councilor Shalaba?
Town manager Lacy, with regards to the roundabouts, has there been any discussions that if they were looking at the roundabout at, what is it, 216, that the church would lose part of their parking lot and what would happen over there?
I think that'll be part of it. If it, if it comes to fruition, those of the state is thinking that that's a good idea to have that. I think it's, it's, there'll be a discussion as to what they're taking for property. Because there obviously is not enough area in that intersection or it's going to be a really small roundabout if you try to squeeze it into the road. But, um, but the other one at McGowan's, there's enough property in that intersection to encompass a roundabout. I, I'm not, I haven't seen design, I'm sure, because the setback lines for the highway portion of the road are further than what you see the asphalt and sidewalk portions. So we'll see what they say.
I'm just wondering if, you know, the, the church or even the parishioners have been kind of talked to, to give their statements about what, what could happen. That's all. I was just curious.
I'm assuming the, the 90, there's two state roads there, obviously 216 and 91. The parameter of the boundaries of the roadway, I can guarantee you go into that parking lot already. They're just not, you know, so I don't know if that's happened.
Thank you.
Uh, Councilor LaPietra?
I'm just going to state that, uh, the pension fund is considered critical if it's funded at 60% or less. As Sean said, we're at 82.7%, I believe, which is the top two or three in the state. And I only mention this as a shout out to my good friend, Phil Overton, because no counselor in the history of the town council, Wesley Town Council kept a better eye on this and made sure that this Wesley Police Pension Fund was always in a good shape.
Yeah, I, I agree. He's very diligent in that, that line item. Any other comments? Moving now to the town solicitor report.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. As was mentioned, uh, through the town manager's report, uh, last Tuesday, the full Coastal Resources Management Council designated Everett Avenue as a right-of-way.
Nice job.
Also, I'd like to bring to the council's attention, uh, on the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, uh, a, uh, Wynn Properties filed a petition for the issuance of a writ of suit of duty with the Supreme Court in regard to the Superior Court's decision that upheld the planning board's action on that matter. It was, uh, it was, although it was filed that day, it was actually rejected for technical reasons. And I do know that one was resubmitted today, later in the day. I haven't read the amendment on it yet, but I did have a chance to read the petition that was filed on the day before Thanksgiving. Essentially, um, it's, uh, it doesn't raise anything new, but it essentially argues that the planning board, as it did in the Superior Court, argues, uh, that the planning board's findings, um, were inconsistent with the, uh, state regulations in this regard. Now, um, uh, I wanted to just take a minute to explain the difference between an appeal and a petition for a writ of suit of duty. So appeal is when you have the ability, when a party who loses in Superior Court has a statutory right to ask for an appeal with the Supreme Court. Request for petition of writ of suit of duty is essentially, it's considered extraordinary equitable writ. It's to the discretion of the Supreme Court. They do not have to accept it. And typically, uh, Supreme Courts, um, accept requests for writs of cert when there's something unusual or unique about the case that deserves review, but would otherwise escape review as a matter of right of appeal. We have 20 days under the rules to respond, to, um, file our objection. Now, this isn't, this, at this stage, because it's a request for the issuance of a petition for a writ of suit of duty, it's not on the merits, it's just whether or not the court will even accept it. So, uh, as I said, because of the fact that it really is considered accepted until today, our 20 days to respond, day one will be tomorrow, gets us, you know, December 21st? Gets us December 21st for our time to answer. So all this is at this stage is whether or not the Supreme Court should even exercise this discretion and accept the writ. It's, um, it's a burden. The burden is on the party requesting, you know, the exercise of that discretion to convince the court that this kind of extraordinary equitable writ should issue. So, um, I will keep the council informed, um, as that progresses, but our answer will not be due on, uh, 21st. The answer is simply the objection to the petition, not on the merits itself. There is no, unlike appeals that are governed by very strict time periods, because these are equitable writs, there's no time period involved. So I can't tell you, for instance, I can't predict to you that the Supreme Court will answer within 30 days, 60 days, 90 days. Sometimes, you know, the Supreme Court rejects the petition within 30 days and sometimes it's three or four months later. So, uh, they just, it's not subject to the same time periods that you run on appeals. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. We thought, as, uh, we said at the time, we thought that, uh, we received a very strong opinion from the Superior Court. It essentially agreed with the planning board and, um, every one of its, uh, points of, uh, of analysis or rationale. So that being said, we have to respond.
Interesting. A lot on the, a lot on the risks there.
Yes.
Any comments?
Did you say a lot of us there? It sounded like Mr. Conley, uh, it seems to be that we're, we're in pretty good shape there.
I, I agree. I, we are in a strong position, but we were talking about risks.
Well, this is a little different from water. I mean, not gonna, but, uh, piggybacking off that, I have more of a question for the town manager. I still want to buy this property. I, I don't think that it's in the right hands. I think the right hands would be the Town of Westerly. Is there a number that we could throw at it? No, we would have to, I've had a conversation with the owner and we'd, um, I would recommend, we'd have a conversation in executive session about it. Wonderful. Thank you. I'll, I'll ask for that later on then. Thank you.
It's also interesting. Uh, any other questions of the solicitor? Noise Neck, thank you for that research. It allowed us to submit. In the next hearing? Bill, the next hearing with the C R M C?
My, uh, my classmate was disturbing. And, uh, I apologize for not paying attention.
The, the next hearing with the, for the C R M C, um, in the, in the senior center?
Oh, yeah, January 6th.
January 6th?
Yep. Yeah, January 6th. We just, uh, they just posted it again. I think it was like Tuesday or Wednesday of Thanksgiving weekend.
I, I think it's important to get it out if, if people are watching.
We'll, uh, yeah, we'll, uh, make sure that, um, I, I thought we had sent it out. If we didn't send the notice, then, okay, great.
We'll put it on the town's website.
Put it on the website.
Okay.
We can mention it the next meeting too, if you want, just let it.
It's going to be at the senior center again. We're still presenting, meaning the, the attorneys, yes.
Very good. Town clerk, is there any report?
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Agenda referrals and backlog agenda. You want to go, Mike? Councilor Niemeyer?
Money for your 250th. Our, our next December meeting, could we discuss, uh, the funding, the request of the 250th commission?
Very good. Councilor LaPietra?
I would like to make it official, the agenda of the executive session, so we get an update on the Winter Park Golf Course, situation, we'll call it. And also, uh, why not get a Potter Hill Dam updated sometime in the next year? So let's see what's happening over there. All right, thanks.
Any other agenda, Councilor Healy?
The area that is downtown, underneath the train tracks in between, if we're walking from the big municipal lot into downtown, the, under there, I think, maybe the 250th commission or another commission. I think that we can make that look a lot better. It's the biggest lot that we have now in town and it is, that's where I park all the time. It's that we are walking right into town, going through there, I think. I think we could probably make that look a lot more inviting for our visitors and our neighbors.
Yeah, that's interesting. That walkway, it's all nicely littered, lit because of the town. But, but.
Go off topic and quick. So the senior class, or the, you know, the art department at the school was proposing a project to do murals on the bridge. Unfortunately, I think the next twelve classes will graduate before you get a okay from Amtrak on that. Then, uh, Amtrak owns the bridge.
So we, they will, I mean, I, I, I will go there. I will make sure that I get the okay, seriously. If the kids want to do it.
You'll be, they want to do it. They, they're trying to get approval to do murals.
I will absolutely.
To the bridge.
I advocate for that a hundred percent.
Two years, two years for approval on the lights and never received it.
Cool. So you're telling me I got to knock on someone's door a lot? All right.
But if you, if you're talking underneath the bridge, under the railroad, that's Amtrak.
That's what you said.
So, I mean, we've been fighting with them in the north end because of the leak that comes down when it rains. We've been arguing and, and trying to get them to come out to fix that for years. So, you know, getting them to do anything, even just even on the, on the bridge on High Street has been challenging.
This would just be for permission to allow them, not an actual work on Amtrak.
Sounds like I've been given.
Senator Goo is, is in contact with them often, so. And it's Council, Council Schlaba also. Good idea. Um, request of town manager by counselors?
Yeah, just as I stated it a moment ago, if, uh, the grants administrator could look into the N E H, Rediscovering Our Revolutionary Traditions Grant? Yeah, I will. And, um, and work with the two hundred and fiftieth commission on trying to find how that should be allocated and what should be applied to. Thank you.
Any others? Uh, request of town solicitor by counselors? Hearing none, you're off the hook. Citizens' comments. This section is open to any subject, uh, for any reason. Any citizens like to speak to the council? Please state your name and address.
Yes, Michael Ober, Sherwood Drive, Westerly. I am also on the school committee. I had come tonight not to speak, but just to listen to see what was going on, primarily because the planning board has never contacted the school committee regarding this issue. Not once, not by email, not by memos, nothing. So the first time we heard about it is when they presented this, the plan to have the school garage, the bus garage moved. So we're, from the beginning, we were a little surprised about that. You would think if this was an important issue, that they would contact the people who are responsible for the building. That aside, we are concerned about water and taking care of it. That's why we put plans in the capital budget to try to, uh, make it safer. So, and we're, we're here to cooperate, but we have to be included on the conversation. And the rea, and let me make it clear, I'm not speaking for the school committee. We were not invited to this meeting. I'm speaking as an individual, as a citizen, and as an individual school committee member. So anything I say is just for me. I, perhaps other school committee members share my feelings, but I cannot speak for them. We should go forward and make sure that the water is safe and it's secure. But as of right now, we are in compliance with zoning. We are in compliance with the fire department and with the water department. No one has ever come to us saying there was an issue. We're glad that there will be a study done, make sure everything is good. But we have to understand, as has been pointed out, there is really no other place to put the school committee, the bus garage, without the same problem. And even if we could, it would be tens of millions of dollars to do that. This is a big decision. We should take our time. We should make sure everything is done correctly. But we are committed to making sure the water is safe and that our community is safe. We, when we did the pilot program for the buses, we asked all those questions. How safe are the buses? How reliable are the buses? What's the maintenance? All that was figured into what we would decide to do. And that's why we decided to go forward. Electric buses, electric vehicles, they're the future. Unless they come up with something else, it will either come slowly or quickly, depending on what different governments do. But to say that we shouldn't do that is just a short sighted. We would have to do it no matter what, sooner or later. Some states have mandated that by the next ten years, all buses go electric. We don't have that yet. In our current school budget, in the capital budget, we have no E V buses scheduled, but we probably will in the future, because again, that's what's coming. Gas buses and diesel buses have their own problems. One of them being that they are too, they pollute and that where they're trying to cut down on those pollutions. And that's why we're going to electric buses. If something else comes in the future, we'll go to that. But I just, this will take time. We need, the school committee needs to be involved more than it has been already. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience that would like to speak on any issue? Seeing none, council's response, Council Neymar?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Ober, for coming and for discussing this matter with us. I think you're right that no matter how this goes, this is going to wind up bumping up very heavily against the purview of the school committee. You're going to have to be involved. Um, you're going to have to be heavily consulted and that's how we should conduct this moving forward. We should do it all together. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Healy.
Thank you, Mr. Ober. I appreciate you coming in and giving us some more information. I think it's the most, you know, the more we get, the better. Because I agree, if, I think, you know, we can't go backwards, but if this was done just a little bit different, I think we could all be on the same playing field and have the same, uh, knowledge instead of having a kind of pull from everywhere. And then honestly, I just kind of wanted to thank everybody. This was a really good meeting. We had a lot of the community here. Seeing everybody but one of the two hundred and fiftieth commission. I, I don't know. It just felt like a really good meeting. It was nice to have the planning board members be able to kind of talk to us in between, just a normal new business item. So thank you, Mr. President, for being able to do this for us this evening. And then I know that it has been talked about and asked of us several times. I do want to let everybody know that the paperwork that we were given today, I will, um, take a picture of it and put it on my Facebook page, but I can also email it if you want, because it wasn't able to be on the T V. So if anybody, you know, needs anything, please don't hesitate to reach out.
As for the two fifty?
No, the, um, the zoning and Aqua for Maps.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
Yeah, we, we, we do attach those to the minutes afterwards.
Okay.
Thank you.
The handouts from the manager?
Thank you. I'll make sure that I send them that way too. I think it's, it's more of a, um, a convenience thing sometimes, you know? Thank you, Mary.
Sure. Council LaPitra?
Mr. Ober, you, you make a good point. You should have been C C in his email. The school committee should have been included and I'm glad that you're in support of the environmental study. And I'll give you a chance, if we could, I, I'd like to have you come back up, because I do have one question for you. Could they, is the, the Fablet fund balance that the school committee paid for the environmental study? Is that a possibility? No. Okay.
It's a town obligation. Council Van Dover?
I just wanted to, thank you for coming and speaking. Again, when I requested that this be brought forward, it was for zoning issues with the, with the bus depot. I figured the best way to start was right here. And the planning guys had already made it so that it was a concern. I think the channels were followed, planning reports to the town council and then, um, I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, I, I don't believe I am, and then, then to the school. And pollution, you talk about pollution from diesel and oil. Well, the pollution that these E V buses can cause to our water supply is, is not repairable. So at least with gas and oil, it can be basically cleaned up and whatever it is they do with all the oil they take from our vehicles and such. So I, 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 I think E Vs are a much bigger concern when it comes to our water supply. So I do disagree with you there, sir. But thank you for coming out and voicing your opinion. We will make sure that you are kept in the loop because it does affect you. Thank you.
You want to speak? I'll, I'll end with, um, that's on me. I should have invited the school committee as well. I felt it was important that the planning board attend and they sent two members that are part of this. But yeah, anything going forward, we definitely have the school committee. And thank you, Mr. Ober, for your recounting of all the precautions that the school committee made before making that decision to, to, uh, bring E V buses into the district, the maintenance requirements, the storage requirements, the, the overall view. I mean, and I think that was lost tonight in some of the presentation, how much work the school committee did and, um, how they are protecting the water supply and how they're protecting the town. So, uh, yeah, it's on me. I'm going to make certain that the school committee's invited on this issue especially. With that completion, um, motion to adjourn?
I'll second that.
Motion made by Council Schlaba, seconded by Council Van Dover. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are now adjourned.